There you go.
God, I don't even need to take that off, actually. It's the other end.
However you want to do it. There you go.
Okay, thank you, Francie.
You're welcome.
It is better than singing to you, right?
It is.
Yeah.
For the public record, we might need to do that.
Right?
It's not moving either.
Just a little, right? I mean, here's a...
I have six o'clock if, uh...
Want it?
Nope, there's Dan.
There's Dan. I'll give Dan...
Recording in progress.
Thank you.
I'll go see if the, see if the staff wants...
What's going on, Dan?
Howdy.
Can I share with staff?
Please, yes. Absolutely, yes, great.
Thank you for this one, Will. Happy birthday.
I should bring it up.
No, I'm sad I got some gum. I totally appreciate it, though.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll bring it home and...
All right, you guys ready? Are we ready over there?
Yeah.
All online, everything? All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let's start with a roll call.
Lay.
Yes, here.
Homer.
Yes.
Crevel.
Here.
Dervison.
Here.
Bush.
Here.
Leighton.
Here.
Walsh and Riggs are not gonna be here. Umquist.
Here.
San.
Here.
Hodges.
Here.
I'm here too.
Excellent. All right, we have minutes to approve from August 12th.
I move to approve the minutes of August 12th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the August 12th meeting. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, unscheduled citizens, is anybody here to speak tonight? Anything that is not on the agenda? Anybody online or anything? No?
No one online.
Uh, any amendments to this agenda?
Nope.
Okay. Um, all right, barring any unfinished business, which is basically where we're at, I think, really. Public hearing, uh, the continuation, um, of the repeal and replace the existing Chapter 16 Land Use Code and Development Code of the City of Salida Municipal Code? Did I say that all right?
Mm-hmm.
Enough?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sounds good enough.
Mouthful of code and municipal.
Right.
Yeah, um, we are still waiting for Matt Gable to join us.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna, I'd be able to get started, but I wanna see what's up. I think he's having some...
I'm here, Bill. I'm here.
Oh, he is? All right.
Oh, okay, great.
Fantastic, good.
I was just waiting for you guys.
Okay, good, good. Excellent, all right.
And he's signed in as you, that's why.
What's that? Oh, he's signing in as me. That makes sense, because I heard it.
Oh, I, I used Bill's invite, that's why that is. Oh, yeah.
Okay, um, so, uh, we are here for the continuation, um, of the land use code rewrites. Um, I wanna give a special thanks this evening to the birthday boy for coming in and being a part of the planning commission.
Why we're eating fudge on the diet.
Yes, yes. Um, so, uh, I wanna just kinda quickly rehash what we did on August 12th and then, um, we're gonna give you an update on what has been done to the code since that date, as we had already indicated we were going to do, plus some additional changes, um, in the meantime. Uh, obviously, at the last meeting, we went through and, um, discussed more or less on a chapter or section by section basis, all the, all the big changes, and, um, got through the, the vast majority of those, and I know there were some discussion, um, topics that you all maybe wanted to come back to revisit, um, but let's just jump ahead to slide number 33 on there. And, um, we can certainly go back and rehash, you know, all, all the other stuff that, that we talked about at the last meeting, but, um, Matt's gonna give a quick overview of the changes that have been made to the code since we met last. Um, and we've got two slides talking about those changes. So, Matt, why don't you take it away and talk about those changes?
Sure, thanks, Bill, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here again virtually. Um, this is gonna be a lot of kind of nuts and bolts, um, section by section discussion of changes that we made, trying to be very responsive to all the comments that were received. Um, let's see, first of all, ADU standards, um, we needed to make some standards to clarify, uh, the standards that would apply to accessory dwelling units to ensure that, um, you will get the potential monies available not supporting jurisdiction program from the state. Uh, these were done in the accessory dwelling unit standards, uh, which is in sixteen three of, uh, let me view the right cross-reference, sixteen three... Sorry, Bill.
Yeah, I got it right in front of me as well, so...
Thirty F, accessory uses and structures under one. And Bill, just to clarify, I wasn't gonna show these on screen. I was just gonna talk about them verbally. Is that, is that sufficient?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I'll add in as necessary.
Okay, yeah, um, basically, we needed to just clarify that, uh, these are very minor things. For example, when you can require an off-street parking space for an ADU, there needed to be some slight tweaks to, to ensure consistency with the state program, so, period, those are done. Um, same thing in terms of an external compliance issue, uh, there was some need to, uh, modify the affordable housing language, uh, in Chapter nine, Article nine, sixteen nine, uh, dealing with the Affordable Housing Program to, to qualify for the, the fast-track, um, expedited review of affordable housing, uh, to qualify, to comply with the new Prop 123. Uh, that was all done. Again, that's in Article sixteen dash nine.
And that was just for developments with 50% inclusionary housing and above. So, you would have to come in, in order to get that fast-tracking, it's just for those projects with 50% IH or more. And that was, that was the requirement of the state.
Plan development is something that we had talked about potentially dividing into, into having a preliminary stage and a final stage, similar to you have in the new code with subdivision. Um, however, it's really a little bit of apples and oranges there. You know, upon further reflection, it didn't seem wise to bifurcate that process because you're not getting anything. There, there's no real point in an early stage of a rezoning, but you, it's either rezoned or not. Uh, there's no early product from that rezoning process short of the rezoning itself. Uh, and so, rather than try to confuse the code by carving out some artificial first step, um, we, we looked at the way it is, and I think there could be some more internal discussion, especially with the administrative manual, the user's guide, about, you know, the level of submissions that are required, uh, at different stages of the PPD approval, but again, there was, there was no real point in carving out a first step in that process. So, no change. Long-term occupancy of RVs, uh, we talked about this last time, and there was some question and discussion about the approval process for those more than 30 days, how they should be approved. Uh, that was clarified in the edits to be a minor site plan, uh, not requiring that full-on conditional use process with a public here. It's minor site plan. Uh, and then, variety of script errors, like just cleanup of formatting and headings, things like that. Not too many of those, but we did clean up a dozen or so ongoing. Next slide. All right, the commission had a discussion about non-conformities. Uh, we basically, uh, the, the particular issue was about, uh, existing single-family residential dwellings that are deemed to be non-conforming uses and how that they can make improvements, uh, to the main and accessory structures as long as the improvements don't increase the degree of non-conformity, um, or increase the height or building footprint. We simply carried that language forward and put it in both the non-conforming structure and non-conforming use section. So, it's clear that it applies to either a non-conforming, a building or non-conforming use. That's just based directly on y'all's recommendation. Uh, clarified the height incentives around height in certain zones, uh, we cleaned up. So, you basically can only get the incentive bonus height in the mixed-use zones, and we clarified that in two places, sixteen two and sixteen nine. There are other, uh, development incentives, uh, that apply to, to inclusionary housing beyond height that you might be available, that you might be, uh, eligible for in other, other zones, but for the height, we clarified that that's only in the mixed-use zones. City gets a lot of requests about tiny homes and tiny houses, and we use the state definitions to add in new definitions to this draft code for each of those and to clarify, you know, what the distinction is. The tiny, uh, uh, homes and houses have both been added to the use table. I wanna look very specifically at the terms. Say it right. The tiny house is something that complies with the Residential Building Code, uh, and that is allowed in all the districts in which an accessory, uh, dwelling unit is allowed. It's the R3 as a minor site plan, the R, the MMP, and that's it. And then, the tiny home is an accessory, uh, structure, which we added to be allowed in R1, R2, R3, uh, all of the mixed-use districts and the AG district. So, it's a lot more broader. Um, so, that's, that's been added. That should clarify a lot of questions that this place is getting. Maximum disturbance that's allowed in riparian setbacks. So, you know, there's the, there's limitations on what can be done in the riparian setbacks in that new set of standards, the buffers versus the setbacks. Um, we had some exception language for patios and exterior stairways, things like that. Uh, we added new language to clarify that you can have, uh, basically, um, a couple of types of, of intrusions. Um, one is the, uh, one is the patios or fire pits, and they cannot exceed, uh, 200 square feet or 10% of the total area of the setback. A second type of intrusion is the engineered stairs or pathways. They can intrude into an additional 200 square feet, so you've got 400 feet total. And that was always the intent. We just clarified the language, so it's 200 patios or fire pits, 200 square feet for stairs, then you can add those two to have a total of 400 feet possible total. Uh, cleaned up pilot section references, et cetera. I already mentioned that. Uh, the grading and erosion control section, uh, did not have a purpose statement, so we added that to clarify, you know, the reasons why a local government, uh, regulates grading, you know, to protect water quality and to protect, uh, soil disturbance, et cetera. Um, clarified fair contribution to school sites language, uh, school sites language of sixteen four one hundred. Uh, we basically, actually, this is the, uh, sixteen four one ten is the cross-reference there, and this was a minor change, a lot of trying to remember.
Those are just the exemptions primarily.
That's right.
Where school sighting was not required.
Yeah. Um, pursuant to new state law, natural medicine healing centers, uh, have been added as a new specific use type. Uh, those were added to the use table. Uh, they are added as a type of personal service, and there's a definition, uh, included, and there is a new set of use-specific standards. All of that is carried forward, uh, pretty much unchanged from the language from, from Nina, from the town's attorney, uh, based on state law. Um, that's a section that is actually kind of kept together. Normally, for the drafting process, we would have broken it apart. We would have put the definitions in the definition section, for example, but we kept all that as a, as a unit, uh, based on her recommendation to, that the state wanted it all kept as a unit in the code. Uh, and then, we have identified a, a range of changes that are needed to the communications facility section, wireless towers, et cetera. Um, those have not been done. That's the one piece that, uh, the city attorney's office is still, uh, working on and is planning on reviewing in a future draft, and I think that might actually be anticipated following the adoption of this code.
I am sorry, I'm having a hard time switching between my screens right now, and it's, it's something is weird about it. Like, I can't control the screen as I'm looking at it.
Are you able to, to go to the next slide?
Yeah, it's gonna continue. I'm just gonna continue to have to switch back and forth between Zoom and Adobe.
Bill, can I ask you a question while she's doing it? What section is the tiny homes, tiny houses in? Because I, I remember reading the others, but I don't remember catching that.
So, tiny houses, um, because there, the state actually has its own definitions around tiny homes and tiny houses. Tiny houses, um, basically those, uh, 400 square feet and, and below that are on foundations. Um, those are in the use table under residential uses. Tiny homes, um, are, uh, listed under accessory uses in the use table. Both of them have their own, uh, specific definitions in our definition section.
And that would be sixteen three, sixteen nine?
Sixteen, uh, sixteen ten for the definition section, sixteen three for the use table.
Sixteen three, that's what, okay, right.
And, you know, a tiny home on wheels, uh, could also be considered an RV.
An RV, right.
So, it would be captured in that RV section.
Okay, I just was curious.
Yeah.
The tiny houses, the square foot, that, that is in, in residential use?
Correct. As a, listed as a primary use.
As a primary structure versus home.
Tiny home is accessory, tiny house is residential.
Okay, that makes sense, thanks.
To split another hair, I guess supposedly you could have a tiny house on a foundation as an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
As well.
But one other point there, that they're, they're both listed as, as 400 square feet or below. That's the threshold for both of them. So, it's not a size issue. It's a, is it attached to wheels or is it attached to foundation? That's the issue.
But it's more limited in, in zones as far as in the residential as a primary. Is that, is that right? Versus accessory, it's in, it's in any, virtually any zone.
Yeah.
But for, as a primary, what...
Why would it be limited to 400 square feet in a primary?
Uh, because that's how the state defines it.
Defines it.
Okay.
And am I correct that they would only be allowed in R3 then?
Could you pull up the use table?
R3 and manufactured.
Manufactured.
Yeah, MMP as well.
Yep, yep.
But the tiny homes could be in pretty much any zoning district as an ADU?
As an accessory stru-, yeah, that's one.
And they will pull up this.
Not, not all of them, but most of them.
Most of them.
We could zoom in on that a little bit. So, tiny homes, uh, would be permitted via minor site plan review in R3.
Tiny house.
Tiny house, R3, R4. Right.
When does that happen? Site plan review in R3 permitted outright in MMP, um, and then, it's not allowed anywhere else. But a tiny home, if we go down to accessory uses...
Here we go, next page.
Right there, at the bottom of that one. Those would be allowed as accessory uses in R1 through R3, not allowed in the MMP. Doesn't really make sense in that, that one, because you're not gonna have, um, accessory dwelling units as part of that. And then, it's permitted in all the mixed-use zones as an accessory use, as well as the ag zone.
And subject to the same setback requirements as in...
And subject to the same setback requirements as an ADU?
Correct, of any other accessory building or structure.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, yeah.
That's the list.
Basically, we just wanted to show you what we have changed since you last saw it a couple of weeks ago. And kind of reopen it for the discussion and pick up where we all left off. And we're happy to go back to the presentation if we need to cover some of the other changes or answer questions about anything else in the code that you might have.
Questions for staff on any of that?
We do have a few folks, or maybe just one, one name for the public comment.
Okay.
While we're talking about tiny houses and tiny homes and getting confused, I assume there's some type of criteria. Is there any type of like building health and safety criteria for the structure that is the tiny home? Does that need to be inspected? Does, what, you know, is that contained in the definition or?
So yes, there are, there are requirements at the state level as far as these units. It will need to be inspected and approved by, now, this is where it gets a little fuzzy. But has to either have HUD code compliance, IRC compliance. Or if neither of them are available, it has to be inspected in a state manufacturing facility. Or by the state in a manufacturing facility and signed off on and approved. There's statutory language that's admittedly pretty confusing. But in each case, it does need to be inspected and approved for code standards.
And would those inspections be readily available in our community?
Yes.
We have those inspectors?
Yes, at the county, at the county level.
County level, okay.
To check it according to the relevant.
Be like the same as the building inspector?
It would be the same guy.
Department, yes.
And do they, do we know that they can take that on?
Yes, the county is familiar with this.
Okay, yeah, great. I just envisioned calling the county and saying I need my tiny home inspection. You know, raising a couple eyebrows if they weren't aware.
Yeah, if you're planning on doing it yourself, I would contact the county first before building it and then having them come back afterwards. Cool, thanks.
I really appreciate making room in our code for tiny homes and tiny houses because we've had that request over and over again. And I think that's a good change.
All right, there's no other questions for Bill. I'll go ahead and open public comment.
Yeah, it's on nothing we actually discussed, but am I correct that we could, you could build an apartment building in R two?
Yes, yeah. And that's, that's the case currently. So that's continued.
Understand. Do we think that's appropriate?
If we go, could you go to R two in the zoning districts? And we'll just go to the purpose statement and then come back to the dimensional standards. So, you know, R two does say that it's intended for medium-density residential neighborhoods, variety of single-family dwelling forms, smaller multifamily residences.
Smaller? Do we need to define smaller?
So.
Is it in the table?
It's based off of your density primarily and limited, further limited by your setbacks and coverage.
Okay, but if I had a big enough lot, is there anything that would keep me from building, I'll say, a forty-eight or a sixty-four unit apartment building?
No. However, you would need to go in front of this body and potentially city council if it was anything more than nineteen. So there's those multiple steps. You have the density that's allowed and the other restrictions. But then, Matt, do you remember off the top of your head where that particular table is that discusses the thresholds for going in front of planning commission based off of density?
Yeah, it's the consolidated table for all the measurements, which is.
Density is the, but if I have one lot and I put a ninety-six.
Sixteen-two-twenty would be a big lot.
You're looking for the dimensional thing.
You're right, it would be a big lot, but is there anything, we don't have anything that restricts lot size, I believe. I mean, the point I'm trying to get at is would a forty-eight uni-, one of the units like was.
Slideryge.
Yeah. Fit in a typical R two neighborhood?
You're not talking about, well, would it fit size-wise? You're talking about would it fit the community, right?
I think he's saying legally, size-wise.
Well, I'm, I'm, would a building of that size fit in that neighborhood?
I think the code anticipates that that would be a harder question to answer based on context and based on the specifics of the proposal. And that's why it's elevated to a major site plan. It's not prohibited outright, but it would require that more intensive level of scrutiny.
But can we legally deny something which the code allows? Yeah, we have to have a review, but as long as it's consistent with what's allowed in the code. If we say, sorry, we don't like your plan, go away. The developer would have a right to come back and sue us for violating our code.
Well, of course, we would have some basic standards to review it. I'm trying to find that, where is that darn table?
I mean, I guess I'm looking at the summary of dimensional standards and I hear what you're saying, Giff, but it seems like we've, you know, there's lot frontage, there's lot size, there's all these things. And I guess it's not impossible, what you're saying could occur, but we just.
But typically, our lot sizes are minimums, not maximums.
Correct, correct.
So if somebody wanted to have a two-acre plot and put one building.
I get what you're saying. Believe me.
But two acres would, I mean, again, yeah, I get what you're saying too. I mean, the two acres would, the minimum densities or the max, you know, the density allowances would really limit that, you know, that's why I said.
Density allowance says that you have to, what, in R two, I think it's forty-five percent. So you could have.
Forty-five percent structure coverage.
What?
That's coverage.
That's coverage.
Yeah, that's the max. And then you're required to have a minimum of thirty-five percent landscape area.
Okay, and you have parking. But I, you know, I think, I worry that someone could put an apartment building in R two, which I don't think is appropriate.
So I do think that there are some basic standards, you know, correct me if I'm wrong here, Matt. But if somebody was coming in with a forty-eight unit apartment complex in the R two, that automatically kicks it into the major site plan. And would, it would require that review in front of planning commission. And the standards that they would utilize would be the, some of the basic standards that we have in the code, including consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, but.
Et cetera.
Remember also that we broadened the applicability of the large-scale development standards. So, you know, right now, those only apply to big boxes, commercial. But in the new code, those would apply to any type of larger multifamily as well as a commercial building. So all those new design standards to control the look and the feel of the site layout, of the building design, those would kick in as well. Those would give the major site plan process much more teeth.
But again, if that building did not violate the code, would either this body or the city council have the legal right to deny it?
Well, you shouldn't be denying it if it complies with the code that you adopt.
That's his point.
That's my point.
I know, but we'll change the standards down then if they're not getting to that prohibiting what it is that you're concerned about. But we've laid out the standards to control the look and the feel of those buildings when they come, when they make it through that narrow pathway in R two where they can meet all these different thresholds. The lot size threshold, the structure coverage threshold, the threshold, the threshold, they've provided the parking, they've provided the landscaping, they've met all the design requirements. In theory, the code says if they've met all those things that you're comfortable with that.
Where in R two is there going to be a lot that size?
There could be.
Okay, I mean, like, like the thing that was just approved by the city council that came before us, that's fourteen acres.
Fifteen, yeah.
And it hasn't, that's, we don't have a plan. So what would keep that developer from doing exactly what I said?
Because I think they approved it R three though, so it's not R two.
That's true.
I have a question though, Bill. Refresh my memory, the property that Diesel's building, five oh five Oak, I think it is. Was that zoned R three?
That was a PD.
Pardon?
That was a PD. You mean on Oak Street?
Oh, right, yeah. Because he had three apartment buildings and then the townhomes. And that was a PD, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And it was zoned R three as a PD?
It was. I am forgetting if that was a PD. Well, do we have the regular zoning map, the current zoning map somewhere? I'm looking around. I'm not seeing it, but.
But I get what the point Giff is trying to make. And that is that, you know, we are, as a body, really promoting, I think the city council is as well, because of the housing shortage, housing crisis, more R three development because it maximizes the space, it also maximizes the public land around the unit. So it's a benefit to a lot of plaintiffs. But since most of the older part of Salida is R two, a lot of times somebody will have a few lots and they'll erase the lot line and create a much bigger lot. And so I think putting that in perspective of being surrounded by smaller, older homes might not be appropriate, you know, piece by piece. But so, but if we don't have anything in the code to prevent it, then our hands are tied. And I think that's what Giff is trying to say, right?
Getting on that, how easy is it to combine lots, like?
Oh, so it just, they come before us, we remove the line and it becomes one.
Okay, but do we have to remove the line? I guess that's what I'm saying. Is that in another place?
But again, I don't know that there's any, any, I don't know that there's any reason that we wouldn't. I mean, if we were to deny that.
Do we have a legal, do we have a legal right not to allow them to do it?
Right.
Yeah, that's my question.
I don't think we do.
Generally, no. And those who's currently come forth to staff and decision is based off of.
So what I think maybe Giff is proposing is wondering how we feel about changing the use in R two to prevent certain size apartment buildings?
When you say size, you mean number of units?
Is that what you're trying to say, Giff? I don't know.
Why don't we, why don't we, why don't we get in, get public comment through? And then we, because this is obviously a discussion that's going to go around a little bit.
All right.
So.
I'm all for that.
Well, I'm sure we'll have other questions, but let's go ahead and open public comment with Pete Foreman.
Hi, Pete.
Hi. Hey, if you guys want to continue to talk and defer this, that's fine, but I'm happy to comment now. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for your service to the community by serving on this commission. I have a few brief comments and rather than digging into details, I have some overarching observations. I've been witness to quite a few interactions in this room in the last few months. And what I see continuously is reference back to the 2022 community survey and quote the housing crisis, unquote. It is true that that survey as presented here shows the number one issue in the community was affordable housing for the people that work in town. However, it was not the only recommendation. I would encourage you to go back and take a look. Not far behind was preserving community character. Right behind that was job creation. And curiously, further down was economic development. And I'm not sure how job creation and economic development differed in the definition of the survey. If I sum the two, it'd be a hundred and eight percent. So clearly that's not correct. But please do review the survey results and that presentation from back in twenty-two and understand that we're looking for balance across the various objectives of the community and not a single focus on resolving the housing crisis. Second, twenty-twenty-two was a very long time ago. It was, we were coming out of the pandemic as a culture. People were still wearing masks everywhere. The world's changed and probably, I don't know if we need a new survey, but we need to at least look at current data to see if in fact we have a crisis or simply an ongoing need that needs to be balanced against other things in the community. There has been some actual data brought forth. It's fuzzy, but it principally comes from our realtor community. And the thing that troubles me the most is the statements that several have made that we're overbuilding in affordable housing. That the amount that's approved in the pipeline for construction exceeds actually the forecast for the entire county through twenty-twenty-seven. So we need to take a real careful look at what we're doing and what we're driving to. Second, threaded throughout this document and several other things, has been comments about efficiency. Efficiency was nowhere in that survey. So maybe we ought to ask the community whether efficiency is really a top priority or whether the things that actually came out in the survey are the things that ought to be balanced. Two more comments. One is I would love to see revision bars as the document evolves or markup or strike through and insertions or whatever it might be. So that in this large document, I could see where changes have been made. Hopefully you have the tools to be able to do that. What I see in the packet doesn't include revision bars.
Well, those were, those were available during further revisions. And then once we posted, am I correct? And then once we posted kind of the full, there were not the explanations and/or to the degree that they are now.
Correct, correct. And I apologize. Actually, with this most recent version, the track changes were just sent to planning.
Planning commission.
That should be included in the packet. And last, I provided input by email about Dark Sky. I really appreciate the opportunity to provide that input. Actually don't see it in the packet, so I'd like to make it, make sure it made it to you and to the rest of the commission.
I believe that's in there. There's a dark, there's reference to Dark Sky and it's in the code.
It, there it is in the code. I made a number of suggestions for improving the code to better represent that and remove some ambiguities. And I'd be happy to provide that directly to y'all if you'd like, or I think you have it.
Yeah, and we can talk to Matt about the specific changes.
I would love to hear that either here or offline. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. I feel so special, like I said.
I don't know.
Bill, do you know if the housing authority is doing a new survey? I, it seems like in my mind, I'm remembering that they are revising that information.
It is. They have to redo the housing needs assessment to meet the new state standards. And they just recently secured a grant to do that. And I believe that they're in conversations with a potential consultant to do that survey. We don't anticipate it being ready until sometime in twenty-twenty-six.
And I would just like to respond if I may.
Yeah, sure.
To Pete, appreciate your comments very much. We, as a body, are very tuned into community character and talk about that all the time. But when we're talking about zoning and numbers of units and things, the, you know, the housing workforce need is always top of mind. But we have not forgotten community character, which is, I think, where Giff's comments were directed.
That was an example.
Sure.
Many priorities need to be traded off.
Sure, I understand.
All right, so-
Would you like Matt to speak to the lighting?
Yes, please.
Information, because I know-
Sure, if he's got, yeah.
I know the graphics made it in there.
Yeah, we made several edits based on those comments, and I don't have the original list of comments, Bill, but we added another graphic, you know, to illustrate-
164-100, I believe.
164-100?
Yeah, to illustrate no light trespass based on the comments. I'll wait till you get there. If you don't, well, yeah, okay, that's the graphic that we added to illustrate light not, oh gosh, our illustrator misspelled premises, so we'll have to fix that. I just noticed that. But that's a new illustration. Go back up to the purpose statement, there was a provision earlier that said ensure security for persons and properties, and the commenter requested that that be taken out of the purpose language, and we did that. If you go down to section D8, let's see here, I'm sorry, yeah, under the floodlights provision, scroll down, scroll down, under the new H there, floodlights, yeah. We added some language about flight poles and about, we already had an exemption for lighting on flight poles, but we changed the language to be more targeted, literally, to say targeted directional spot fixtures may be used to eliminate flight poles. Such fixtures shall be cut to a minimum brightness, and the poles should be lit from the top down instead of from the ground. That came directly from the commenter's suggestions. Those are the ones that we made immediately. There were a couple of others that I, I think we either had covered elsewhere or needed greater clarification, or were just inconsistent with what we were trying to do. But that's, that's, that's three that we made just to illustrate responsiveness to the commenter's points.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Had to risk good being out of turn, thank you.
All right, if that's it, if anybody else, is there anybody else that wants to speak to this? I'll give you a chance. Okay. Anybody online?
There is one person, there's one person online. If you would like to speak, could you please raise your hand? There's a raise hand function at the bottom of the screen. They are not raising their hand.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, and then we can get back into discussion.
Matt, do you know where that, that table is specifically, where it says residential units 19 and over?
Oh, you're talking about the site plan table, Bill?
Yes, yeah. I'm struggling to find it in my version, but I believe, I have the old version, so...
Yeah, it's on 168, hold on.
168?
No, hold on, I'm sorry.
1638?
You're talking about the table with the number of units?
Yeah, where it says 5 to 19, planning commission decision.
Yeah, that, that's actually, well, we should have this conversation offline, but that, that's a table that's been carried forward in some of the PowerPoints from earlier drafts, but we actually removed that in favor of just having a clear distinction in the use table.
Okay, so and if we go to, let's go pull up the use table then.
Is that the table of allowed uses you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a, there was a separate call out to highlight the thresholds changing, but now, as you can see-
This is where it is.
Right, so under multifamily, 5 to 19 would end up being a minor site plan review in R2 and R3, but then anything 20 units and above would be a major site plan in R2. So that's getting to the question that Giff had brought up earlier, that it would have to come in front of this body. Now, I think part of your question is, if I'm not mistaken, yes, there's an M there, and yes, it would show up in front of you, but what are you exactly reviewing outside of the dimensional standards? And if the dimensional standards can be met with a large R2 tract that has, say, 48 units, what else would you be reviewing it by? And my sense is the same as all the rest of these uses that have no specific, or use specific standards, we still need to review all the rest of the relevant stand, development standards out there for consistency with the code. But is there anything else that would, I guess by which this, this body could deny an application that meets all those dimensional standards and say the, the large building design standards?
Only if there was something in the code that said that we had the authority to review community character or something, I mean, that may not be the right term, but to review whether it fits with that particular neighborhood, and whether that would give us something in the code to hang our hat on.
And I, if I could jump in, I really feel like the conditional use criteria are much more suited to that type of evaluation. When I hear Giff talking about just, does it fit, that's, that's really more that the conditional use approval criteria are designed to get at. The major site plan is, is more, does it comply with all the standards in the code? And it is a larger set of criteria, because you do kick in with those higher building design criteria that I mentioned earlier, but if it's really more of an appropriateness to its location and does it fit, that's a subject, subjectivity piece that really the conditional use permit is designed to get at.
Well, if, if, if I may, Matt, you know, I know in the Sackett's overlay, there are those conditions for mass and scale, and so I'm wondering whether that would be something that could be adjusted somehow to fit some of these other areas too. You know, if, if the building next to it is tiny, you know, and you want to build on the lot next to it, and you want to build 35 feet, it's not going to conform with the overlay in the Sackett's neighborhood. And that was put in place, I think, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, in 2012 by a neighborhood effort?
Yeah, I don't know the exact year, but it was-
Going door to door, yeah.
Before me, yeah.
So, I mean, I think that's what maybe Giff is getting at, is, is there a way to balance mass and scale in a neighborhood? I don't know.
Yeah?
I, I just think when you start doing that, you limit the ability for that neighborhood to naturally grow into its state that we've said it can be at. And you're, you're already putting restrictions on it when we've, you're putting further restrictions on it that we're, we've already put on it.
I tend to agree with, there's been a lot of thought set into, put into these dimensions and things, and I, I get it, but we've also approved lots of developments and-
Sure.
A lot of the restrictions are adequate. And I don't know where we would draw the line now, 48, 36, 27?
Yeah. Well, it would depend, the number of units would depend on the size of the lot and the other, the other dimensional, you know, I mean, how many is allowed, I mean, if you have a small lot. I mean, we've had, you know, we've had three that I can put my finger on right this minute that were 19 or less units that were developed for apartments. I think the Judds, and I think they've sold them now, went on, Illinois went to the Housing Authority, and the Blue Jay, I don't know if that's a R2 or not, but they were all three in Magpie, they were all three one-story units or buildings, none of them went too high. So they fit really nicely into where it was, but I, I hear you. I mean, I'm not advocating for it, I'm just saying that, you know, if we were to want to limit mass and scale, that would be the model, I would think.
Well, I got the impression that no one else is bothered by this, so I'll shut up.
Well, we'll see, if we're bothered by it when one comes before us, and it's next door. I mean, I don't know that there's any real solution, other than taking, taking that out of the R2, saying you can't have apartments, but if you do that, then these other apartments that were completely, you know, reasonable, wouldn't have been allowed, so...
Yeah, or you don't permit it over 20.
Right. Right, well, maybe that's the way to handle it.
You just change that M to an N.
Right.
20 plus, but...
Right.
I tend to agree with Greg that the dimensional standards are likely to make it-
Probably handle it.
Pretty challenging.
I think it's pretty solid.
Yeah, and there'd be ways around that, obviously, if you have a larger tract, you could potentially subdivide it, and then put 19 on one and 19 on the other, or something along those lines, I mean.
But if we're worried about big, blocky things, then splitting a 40 unit into two 19s is-
Right.
To me, the biggest-
More compatible with the character.
The biggest, like, quote safeguarder, the, the limiting factor is that lot coverage, you know, the required, what is it, 45% or something like that?
Yeah, we'd have to pull up the table, I don't have that one memorized.
Let's say you did, you packed everything into one building, you have a lot of green space around it or other open space, I mean-
Right.
Looks like Matt also has his hand raised.
Yeah, thank you. I was just gonna offer one other suggestion. The residential adjacency standards are a tool that is used in some communities to get at this type of issue. Remember that we have those in 16490F, the site and building design sections, and it's mainly drafted right now to get at non-residential uses that come in adjacent to neighborhoods, and it controls, you know, where you can have an outdoor loudspeaker on a site, you know, and trying to get kind of more intensive activities and orienting, orienting them away from residential. Some communities have used that tool to get at the height of multifamily buildings, and say, if in a situation like this, they would come into R2 and you would have a very large building next to an existing neighborhood, the residential adjacency standards could be drafted to get at building height, to require more step downs, for example. We don't have it drafted like that now, but if that was a, that's a potential tool to thread the needle, I guess.
I wouldn't mind, sorry, Matt, I wouldn't mind having a tool, you know, I'm not, I'm agreeing with Greg, and I think it's unlikely that we'll have this, but more tools are a good thing.
Bill, you and I could talk about that, I guess, if, if there's consensus.
Yeah, I'd want to get some more parameters around that from this body, if, if you wanted to go that, that way, but-
16490 is where that is?
Yeah, 16490F is our residential adjacency standard.
Any idea what page that's on in the doc?
It's approximately 122. It may vary from one version to the next.
122.
It's F at the, yeah, scroll down.
16490.
F.
Resident F.
So now, now you can see that's limited to the mixed-use districts and industrial, going against something coming in adjacent to a residential zone. What I'm proposing would be a broadening of that to also include multifamily that comes in, in the R2 adjacent to existing smaller scale development. There's, there's a lot of definitions we would have to think through, what, you know, what, what would trigger this in this context? Is it just an existing single-story building, or it's a two-story building? What are we looking to protect? How do we carve existing R2? We'd be dividing R2 development based on the types, and it'd be a little tricky, we can do it.
How, how would that compare, Matt, to utilizing the criteria that are listed under conditional uses in cases where there are not use-specific standards? So if, if there is not a use-specific standard called out, and it is something that would need to come in front of this body, that you could refer to the conditional use standards of 16850, I believe it is? Is it 50?
My, my gut feeling from a distance here, based on the conversation so far, is that the, applying the conditional use criteria in these circumstances is probably a better fit for what, for the type of subjective analysis you're trying to do.
I'm still trying to find it.
Okay, it's on page 123 of the document we got.
It's so big, he's shutting on me.
Yeah. I've got mine in another program, so it's, but 123, and you know-
Residential adjacency.
Yeah. Applies to new non-residential mixed-use development.
Different densities and to reduce potential negative impacts.
I, I wouldn't mind having something like that available, it, should the need come up, I mean, I'm always so, well, nervous isn't really the right word, but maybe it is, I'm always so aware of all of the unexpected consequences of things, you know, unanticipated things, and I think the more tools we have to, to protect ourselves in the unlikely event that something like that would occur, would not be a bad thing. And we're rewriting the code, so why not have the option, if that's possible, one way or the other, I would leave it to Matt and Bill to figure out which one was better, but to have an option to say, no, this really doesn't fit here, you know? And I don't expect it to come up very often, because most things are, are fine, but, you know, it'd be nice to have the choice.
Well, I think the neighborhood would take care of it as well, as we've seen.
No, but, but we would not have any reason other, if it met the code, we've already established, if it met the code, there would be nothing we could do but to approve it, unless we have some kind of a conditional use or adjacency. So I'm just saying, why not have it in case we need it? No harm, no foul, is what I'm thinking.
I mean, I think we'd get into the weeds on what those tools are and the dimensions and all that.
Well, they're talking about two ways to do it, one's a conditional use and one's adjacency, so I'll leave that to the experts, but...
I think, yeah, I think if you use the residential adjacency, you'd need to basically create those parameters as far as what it would have to meet specifically. There'd be a lot more specifics built into the residential adjacency, just as there is in this particular section here, versus a more general review of it meeting the conditional use criteria, which arguably, and Nina could weigh in on this, but you could deny it based off of, for instance, you know, the first criteria under conditional use is the use shall be appropriate to its proposed location and not disrupt or harm, that's a note on that, it says disrupt or harm the prevailing uses and activities in the immediate vicinity. So that would be, I suppose, arguably, a reason to deny-
Sure.
-one of those developments. But in, in, in any case, whether we're talking about residential adjacency or applying conditional use criteria, I would recommend creating a threshold. Maybe it is that 20 units, anything that's 20 units and above, so that we're not, we're not designing by committee-
Sure.
-for, for five-unit complexes.
No, that makes complete sense, I'd go with the 20 and above, for sure. I think that's reasonable, because we don't want to, we don't want to stop, you know, development, we just want to make sure that it fits. You know, if you have 60 neighbors in a four-hour meeting and there's nothing you can do to satisfy them, you know, then we should have something, we should have that authority, because I think the new code grants us a lot more work, things not necessarily going to council in some of these areas, so, I don't know, I'd like it personally, I'm, I'm agreeing with that.
I do not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan, more, if this, if this body gets more authority, I would think it's better to have stricter definitions in the code that, you know, than, because this body can change rap, you know-
Right.
-rapidly, like-
Sure.
-in any number of ways, and I think that's where the code is really helpful to have, you know, to review based on the code. Your question's a good one, though, in terms of, is that appropriate for R2? I think that's-
Well, right, in R2, if it's a 20-plus building, that's what we're talking about, having that, having something in the code to allow us to deny something we really don't think is right.
I'll throw it out there, I mean, another, another option, you create one more row in the use table of multifamily X units and above. and make it not allowable in R two. That is, I mean, that's a simple solution to this particular question, if you so choose. But you could say anything over forty units in R two, not allowed. And of course, it would be allowed in R three and the other zone districts that. That'd be a lot easier, I think, for
Sure.
drawing a line, because I think folks would, there would not be a lot of predictability, otherwise, if somebody wanted to propose a larger apartment complex.
I'm good with that, but I'm not sure forty is the right number, but anyway.
I just threw that out.
I threw it out of here. Yeah. I mean, Aaron suggested, you know, twenty plus. I think that's a good number for R two. Those lots are really small, you know, and I just think that's not gonna be very harmful if we said that that was, that in R two, on one single lot, you could not do more than an apartment building more than twenty units. It's unlikely to even happen. But it could.
We have the ability to make that amendment in here, if you so choose.
Do we need to vote on it, or I think we're split?
Bill?
Yep.
Just so I understand, we've already got a twenty-plus units line on the row. You're saying, what's the proposal again?
Well.
Twenty-one?
Well, what I had suggested is that you could potentially create one more row for multifamily. And for instance, say dwelling multifamily forty-plus units, and it would read the exact same as the twenty-plus units, except instead of M under R two, it would be N.
I got that, but then when the suggestion was to go back to twenty, that's no different, really, than what we have, and just taking the M out of the R two column.
Yeah, that's what Francie was mentioning, as far as what Aaron had suggested, is you make that, turn that M into an N.
Right. I think that's really easy and clean, and gives Kenny the code he's looking for.
Hey, Bill.
Takes a subjectiveness out of it.
An observation. So if you made some kind of no more than twenty units in R two, that would essentially force a larger piece of property to chop it up, so it could do as many. And then it would be difficult to make the roads line up and things like that. If you did, like Matt's suggesting, the conditional use, you could say, a multifamily development of X units or more, say twenty or something, shall be subject to conditional use review. And then you could put standards in your conditional use review, like Matt was suggesting, that give you a little more teeth. Granted, it would be somewhat subjective, but you could talk about historic characters, mass and scale, you know, whatever. Because just saying no big developments in R two.
No, you made that point really clear. That's really good. But I do like what you're suggesting.
Yeah.
I think we need to figure out if you all want to change it first, and then if so, what's that tool?
Well, I would like to change it.
I'm not, I'm not in favor.
Kenny's not.
I would need to think about it a lot more, because I think the implications of that are pretty far-reaching. And I think, I'm trying to wrap my head around the negative of a, like, let's say, a fourteen-acre parcel going R two. To me, the density, the density, the, you know, the open space requirements, things like that. They, I mean, if it's thirty acres and we go R two, we're kind of saying in the code, like, this is our acceptable density for this parcel. So to me, the specific lot number, like the lot, like we've talked about, you could chop it up into different lots. You could, like, those are manipulatable, like, and so that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around, like, what are we, what are?
I think it's unlikely that we would have a very large parcel and zone it R two, just because that's usually things that are being annexed in that are, you know, that are, I mean, we're talking about R two, which is pretty much the established downtown area. Everything else that we've zoned recently has been R three mostly, except for one exception.
Well, but even in R three, there were unit, recently, there's, you know, the last two
Right.
annexations that came through, a whole nother topic of discussion, but have unit counts on them.
Right.
And to me, that, you know, that's a whole nother discussion.
Well, that's because it was an annexation. But we're talking about someone coming to us with one lot and, you know, wanting to do something that's potentially disruptive to the neighbors and us having the option of agreeing with them or not. You know, I mean, that's all I'm saying, is it, because if we don't put something in here and it meets the code, no matter how awful it is, we have no choice but to pass it. So I just think having a guardrail, that's all I'm looking at. And again, I don't expect it to come up often, because so few things are R two anymore. And mainly, we're talking about the downtown central area, where it's just fairly historic and small little houses and.
Most of Salida's R two.
Right, but I mean, it's the central part. It's not the new, the things coming in from the outside.
I think what you're getting to is the danger, not so much as like in new subdivisions, I don't think that, it's a lot in town.
Right.
It's been sitting there for a while.
Right.
Somebody obtains it, there's one structure on it, it's a big lot. They're gonna demo that and put that in, in the middle of town.
Does it fit?
But.
That's where I, I don't even know.
I don't know where that would be.
I see, I think this impacts new developments the most.
But most new developments aren't gonna be R two.
Maybe so, but.
I mean, they might be, but yeah.
I would think the cost of that lot would not be conducive to put up twenty.
But if we, no. If we put a conditional use on this, that comes into play much more for large new parcels that will be annexed and zoned in the city than it does. I'm not worried. This is, I, it's a stretch to see this happening in town, in my opinion, on a parcel that's big enough to go beyond twenty.
Yeah, but when, though? I mean, you're thinking next ten years, fifteen years? What about in fifty years? I mean, we probably have a new code by then.
We better start working on it right now.
If we can finish this code in the next. But I just think, I just think what we have on there in R two, I just think we can work, I don't think we're gonna all of a sudden get some surprise fifty-unit apartment complex.
Well, you never know. You never know. And what's the harm of putting something in there that gives us the the opportunity to say no if it really is objectionable? That's all I'm saying. And I think that's what Giff's point was. Is that correct, Giff? You've been very quiet since you brought this up.
Like I said, I am done. I don't think anyone agrees with me, so I am done. I'm not gonna waste the.
What do you think about the things?
I'm gonna coin a term, gif grenade.
So, but Giff, what do you think about the things that we're discussing? Because you did bring this to our attention, and we appreciate that. So, do you think that we need a guardrail in R two?
Well, all right, you asked for it. The guardrail is a lot less than twenty, in my opinion.
Well, I'd be happy with a twenty guardrail, personally. It's better than forty.
Could I make a suggestion that we take a straw poll as to whether or not
I think that.
who wants to make a change and who doesn't? And if it's positive for making a change, then we talk about the specifics.
Can I ask one other, like, what the flip side? So say you did put that guardrail in, is there then a path for somebody to come and say, look, I actually have a really good plan for a sixty-unit apartment in downtown Salida. And I'd like you to consider that. Can you do a plan development, or is there some path to?
Well, under the new code, it would be minimum of two acres in order to come in for a plan development.
Yeah.
Okay, this is another grenade, but. Sorry, guys. Sixty units in downtown somewhere or something, like, in a higher, can you still, so you're saying you cannot do a project over?
We're talking about just R two at the moment, but.
Right.
We're just talking about a plan development, I guess.
I'm just talking about a plan development.
Has to be two acres or more.
Minimum two acres.
Why are we, why are we using acreage as a criteria for PD versus?
Versus density.
Versus density, like, your example, forty units in a, in an area where we say, you know, the height and the density is allowed, and you get beyond a certain, so we're saying that so that in that case, a forty-unit building that met the criteria just comes before planning commission?
Well, I mean, to use your example of downtown, there is no limit to the density, right? So you have a lot more flexibility within the downtown district to do that. But moving outwards into the R two or any of the other neighborhoods, we had assigned, I mean, the PD is over the entire city, the PD requirements. But we have been seeing a lot of PDs that could be very small. And it's not typical, honestly, to see PDs over so many of a smaller number of lots. You know, in most communities, you just don't see that, and they have minimum size requirements. I mean, if this body would like to recommend otherwise, that is your group.
Yeah, I think I understand a little bit.
I understand that, yeah.
It's a lot of work for a very small area, generally speaking.
Let's take our straw poll and move along.
Okay, how do we wanna run that? You guys, just, do we need a motion?
No, you just do it up at the bench, for a straw poll.
All right. And are we just live voting, or is it ballot?
No, I mean, we can.
Yeah, we just.
I'm for.
You could do a straw poll.
I'm for making a change.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a proposition for a change to include a limit, right? Do we wanna state, this is for, yeah, state for a limit of twenty
Twenty units?
units for an apartment complex in R two.
R two.
Those in favor?
Me. Am I the only one after Giff brought that up?
Those opposed.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, that's the end of that, then. We sink or we swim on the code.
Okay.
It was a good discussion, though.
Put a look on the right side, Francie.
Oh, it is what it is, you know?
What else do we have on our list from last?
I don't have anything else on my list.
I mean, we, yeah, we had the, what we hadn't, just what he had gone over, ADU standards, Prop one twenty-three fast track.
Sorry, real quick, I think you're, I could be wrong. I think your tiny home, tiny house definitions are flipped. Matt, can you confirm?
Let me just check. When is a house a home?
I'll have to go back and compare to the memo from the state, Bill. I'll double-check while we're talking.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thanks. Good catch, Aaron, if that's.
As a tiny home enthusiast.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't figured.
You're just.
I'll check.
Yeah, there's a memo from the state that we utilized in putting this together, so should be able to check it pretty quick.
Because I think the home is the one with the foundation and the house is your.
I wrote it down.
RV.
The tiny homes are the ADUs, the tiny houses are primary residential.
On, on, home can be on a foundation as well, correct?
The homes have a foundation and their primary use, the houses.
The houses are.
The tiny homes are ADUs. They can have a foundation. And they are allowed in R one through R three, mixed-use and egg zones. This, the tiny houses, square footage, on foundation, state definition only, R three, R four, MMP, primary residential use, right?
Yeah, so it's tight. State says tiny house is on permanent foundation.
Yes, that's what, yes.
I'm mixed up then, thank you.
Well, it's an easy thing to do.
And it's a primary, right?
Primary.
Is the definition what it's sitting on, or if it's a primary or an accessory?
Well, it's a foundation, but it's classed as a primary.
Say that, sorry, say that again.
Well, I was just saying, you were saying that the house is on a foundation.
Right.
And that's primary.
Yep.
And that the home is not on a foundation?
Can be.
It can be, though.
But it could also be an RV.
I think that's when a house becomes a home, or a home becomes a house, actually.
But if it's on a chassis, isn't it in the long-term RV? Or is it, does it go to accessory?
We can actually, if it's on a chassis, we can call it. Actually, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop, because I can't say that. I know the ins and outs of that particular code well enough to determine, but I will say a tiny structure that is on wheels, on a chassis, is considered a tiny home by the state.
Okay.
And we are saying that if it is on a chassis, that it can only be used as an accessory use.
And that it would, it would have to follow the RV rules if it's on a chassis?
Be accessory.
Or accessory dwelling rules?
Accessory dwelling.
So my forty-foot RV can now be an accessory dwelling unit?
Your what?
It's on a chassis.
No, because it won't, because it doesn't meet code.
There are different codes.
Right, right.
So your RV market.
You still need to meet either HUD or IRC, or come from a modular facility that's a state reviews.
Okay.
I mean, because that, that's probably, that's the biggest.
We'll get a lot of requests.
Oh, I know.
If that's not defined.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we will make sure we have our elevator speech ready for them.
Yes.
I think that's about it. Are we ready?
I'm ready.
All right. You want the honors? It's a big day.
I think Giff should do it, because he's been working on it so long.
Do it, Giff.
You wanna make the motion, Giff?
I would move that we approve the new land use code as it is currently written.
Send it to council.
To recommend, recommend.
Recommend to council.
Recommend to council.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to recommend the new change, the repeal.
It's up there.
Repeal, is it?
There it is. Move to recommend repealing and replacing. Chapter sixteen Land Use and Development Code of the Salida Municipal Code as presented in this public.
In this public hearing.
That was Giff's motion, and my second.
All right.
All right.
Any further discussion?
Thank you all for.
Roll call.
All right. Belay? Yes. Boomer?
Yes.
Crevel?
Yes.
Dorrison?
Yes.
Bush?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
There you go.
Now we have to do this.
One down, one to go.
One down, one to go.
All right.
Continuation of the public hearing, repeal and replace existing official zoning map of the city of Salida.
So this is the other part of the land use code, is the comprehensive rezone. And if I could jump to the presentation on that, back to that, there we go. So we have put this draft, final draft planning, or zoning map, rather, together based off of a lot of information that is included in the land use code, information coming out of the future land use map and other parts of the comprehensive plan and other guiding policy documents. Next slide. We have done our best to align the flum mostly with the zoning map, albeit the flum is a guiding policy document, it's not the zoning map itself. But we'll get into some details about particular changes. Next slide. Did we skip one? There, I feel like there was, should be one more. There's a list of information. Did that disappear? Keep going up? Don't know what happened to that last piece. Okay. All right, I had a slide disappear. I'll go off a memory on most of this, but, so number of changes that have happened with this zoning map. Per the future land use map process, there was a desire to separate the zoning districts between Highway fifty and Highway two ninety-one. Currently, C one zoning applies to both, but there's been community consensus around the idea that the character along Highway fifty is very different than that along Highway two ninety-one slash First Street slash Oak Street. So that was shown in the future land use map and has been carried through into the proposed zoning map. The proposed zoning map does create a new mixed-use district called Mixed Use Highway MH out along Highway fifty, and a new mixed-use neighborhood district MN in the, primarily in the areas between Highway fifty and the hospital. So that's one of the bigger changes. We have done what we could to get the industrial zoning out of the center of the city, where it was currently located and historically was located along the Monarch Spur of the railroad, which of course is pretty much right in the heart of downtown. the monarch spur, um, of the railroad, which of course is pretty much right in the heart of downtown. And so again, kind of playing off of the future land use map process, um, we have changed the majority of those properties to MN, Mixed Use Neighborhood, with a couple other changes to MD or R three, uh, depending on the property. And, um, then we have talked about this particular change where we looked at, um, that large number of individually owned R four lots, um, primarily in the southeast portion of the town, um, where, under current code, only mobile and manufactured homes would be allowed as uses. And if they were individually owned small lots, we have converted those to R three. Um, we have created a number of other new zone districts, um, primarily mixed-use districts. Uh, the MN, Mixed Use Neighborhood that I mentioned, the MH, which is a mixed-use highway, MC, which is Mixed Use Center and, and follows along with the future land use map, and those three identified nodal areas along, uh, the highway that are interspersed by a mount about a mile each. And then the Mixed Use Downtown, MD, which primarily replaces the C two district, just to highlight, for the highlight, that there's a mix of residential and commercial uses in our, in our downtown area. Uh, we have also created some new zone districts, uh, including an agricultural reserve district, um, for areas that have current agricultural uses, but may desire to annex in and retain at least some of those agricultural uses. Uh, we have created the Community Facilities Zone, which are primarily those in the blue, um, that are properties held by governmental or quasi-governmental, um, uh, jurisdictions, um, or have buildings on them that are specific to public facilities. And then last but not least, created a Parks and Open Space Zone, which we do not currently have, and would be applied to a lot of our, especially undeveloped parks, um, throughout town, undeveloped in the sense of no major buildings on it, um, and those areas that the city owns on the, uh, other side of the river. So, um, and then additionally, the other, uh, indicators that are on this zoning map include the overlay districts, and as we've discussed in the land use code, we have consolidated a number of the overlay districts into a fewer number of overlay districts, um, applied primarily in the downtown area, um, including the, the downtown historic district, um, the historic protection overlay, um, Sackett's addition is retained. And that's about what I can see from here with my bad eyesight. Um, this process went through, um, not only the future la- land use mapping process, but, um, has been included with the land use code, public meetings, surveys, uh, and other feedback. This is a representation of the conveyor, um, experience tool, which we had up on our website and got a fair amount of traffic on for folks to look at individual properties, um, along the way and to provide feedback about properties and areas of, of town, um, to see the difference between current zoning and proposed zoning. So everything left of that line, uh, is the proposed zoning, whereas everything to the right is the current zoning and you could use that little blue square that's in the middle attached to the line and slide it back and forth to see what the change would be. And then you could go ahead and click on the individual lots to, um, provide feedback. And we got a good amount of feedback from this particular tool. Next slide. So here we are with, with the proposed zoning map. There was, uh, to be, uh, clear and transparent, there was one change that was made from what was in your packet, uh, at the last meeting, which we never reviewed and of course we end up continuing. It was actually from one of our commissioners, Commissioner Bush, who had requested a change. Um, if you want to go ahead and zoom in, actually go to the next slide and that's gonna be even better, we'll have a.
And I guess while Bill's explaining this, Nina, if you could pay attention, because I need to ask you a question after this, if I should need to recuse myself or not.
Yep, um, this was the one.
Giff, come here.
Um, one change that was made, uh, Commissioner Bush did request a change from MN to MD. His property is.
It's right on the boundary.
Right here. And, um, we had, uh, we had made the dividing line between MD and MN, uh, based off of a number of different factors, um, the, the location of the alley, the sort of east-west alley, uh, between G and H, uh, some of the existing uses and, um, potential redevelopability of those lots, the orientation of those buildings to various streets, um, and, uh, you know, a few other factors, you know, really site-specific. Uh, I believe you're gonna hear from, uh, another member of the public this evening who is interested in, um, a similar zone change. And, um, I think it's very fair because, uh, Mr. Gilling, uh, had pointed out that when we did the future land use map, we originally showed, um, a, a very basic dividing line where we would create a transition zone of this mixed-use neighborhood between the downtown MD district and the R two. So we had shown a strip of MN, um, that was really very straight, not as jagged as you see it here. And, um, eventually, city council did make an amendment, um, for that strip to go back to MD. Um, I actually honestly forgot about that amendment and, um, we, an earlier version of this zoning map showed the entirety of it, all the way up to Fourth Street as MD. However, we received a number of comments from the public that had reviewed it on that conveyor tool, um, specific to some of the properties along Fourth Street, saying that those properties, um, had a very different character than the properties facing Third Street to the north and other areas in the downtown, that they were more, those properties were more akin to the R two neighborhood, um, than they were to downtown. And if you, um, why don't we go ahead and pull up Google Maps, please? Um, we can take a look at it just so everybody's familiar with it. So we're right here at the corner of Fourth and E. So downtown is to the right down East Street, you know, the heart of downtown, if you will. And then if we follow along Fourth Street, you can pan back along East Street just for a second if we turn around real quick. Um, back there, we got some churches, we have some, uh, residential homes along East Street. And then let's go back down Fourth Street. Obviously, pretty, whoa, that jumped us, I don't know where we are now. Uh, keep going, yeah, we're actually, that took us the wrong direction, keep going that way, straight.
There we go.
Yeah, so obviously, um.
Back up.
Just so everybody knows, right now, those, those homes, those row homes right there, they are Zone C two, which was what MD got translated from. Um, however, they are obviously very residential in, in nature. Um, let's continue down Fourth Street to the left, uh, and we can take a peek down F right here. You can see the, the outer edges of what we have currently zoned as MD there at the Sucasa Building. Um, and then there's some, uh, parking lots, empty parking lots, actually, that inclu- got included in the MD and they were included in there because of the potential for redevelopment and their connection really with the Sucasa, uh, building. Um, let's continue down Fourth Street. This way, so everything to your, to your left is currently zoned and proposed to be zoned as R two. Everything to the right, um, is currently zoned C two, but proposed to go to MN. Um, again, sort of as that transitional zone. Um, again, that, that MN proposal was based off of the character that's found there. Um, but admittedly, it does create a, a bit of a downzoning, if you will, for those lots, um, on that side facing Fourth Street, we can continue that, down that way. But it's pretty much the same with the exception of Carrion and Sharon, which is right here on the corner of, um, G and Fourth, it's the one commercial use in that vicinity and that is proposed for MN currently as are the other residential uses around it, both the, the newer buildings there, um, across from Hilton and some other stuff down G. In regards to Commissioner Bush's property, um, could you go down?
Down G.
G for a second, please?
You make no motorcycle noises while you do that.
Yeah.
I'm on a bike, can we go on a bike? Uh, keep going down to the alley, please.
Oh, yeah.
A little bit further, okay, right there. So we made, on this particular block, we made the cutoff at the alley. So everything that was towards, uh, the east was MD and everything to the, to the west was MN. If you turn around, basically a hundred and eighty degrees.
That's Dan's house.
I have.
Sorry to point you out, or call you out, but, uh, Dan's house is right there and.
And it's split.
I- it's right in the middle of the alley and I honestly don't remember, we might have flipped a coin or something on that one as far as, um, the zoning was concerned. But when you look at it, it's actually, his lot is offset just slightly to the north of the alley. And so when the request came in, it seemed to kind of meet that, those criteria that we've been using. And so I had no concern with making that change, um, and including that home, that property. Um, so that is the one change that we made.
Confused, so, so you want MD, not MN?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
You want it to be like it's here.
And I guess, yeah, in the interest of, maybe I should just jump in here.
Right.
Um, and I won't speak for Ben, who's my neighbor, but yeah, the future land use map had the whole block zoned, uh, MD, proposed to be zoned MD. And I just noticed after our last meeting, I was like, oh, no, I'm MN, and I was like, no, I don't want that. So I reached out and I was like, how do I, how do I do this, et cetera, et cetera, so that was the genesis.
Can I ask you why you wanted it?
I just, it, it gives me more flexibility in the future if I wanna like sell the property or build up or whatever. And the part you can't see right there is, my property is actually, was subdivided, so my house is in MN and the other part of the subdivided lot is MD, it literally runs on my fence line. And they're both single-family homes, so it just seemed weird and just general question.
Sure.
I don't, I can't speak to the, I mean, Bill was mentioning, he got questions during the kind of review process from the public and I, I believe that, um, so it's kind of a balancing act. And Nina, I, I feel like I, I probably will recuse myself, I feel a little uncomfortable passing judgment of, but, um, anyway.
There's Nina.
Yeah, um, it's up to you, I was gonna say probab- it, it's, at first when Bill asked us, it's probably good to refrain from the conversation, but on the other hand, it's, we're bringing more light, like, Bill's bringing more light with, um, out of fairness and transparency as well. So, um, I'll leave it up to your judgment, because this is, um, this is, you. Um, this applies to the whole city and, um, so I'll leave it up to your discretion whether you're gonna vote, you know, yes or no for the whole, you know, comprehensive rezon.
Okay, I'm gonna recuse myself just because I feel like it's better to err on the side of caution.
I agree.
And that's right.
We, um, can you recuse yourself just for this specific?
Well, this, this is the zoning, rezoning thing versus.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna vote like a.
On, on the map.
On the map.
Right, I think that's right.
Well, on the, on that specific change versus the map.
Right.
I would say yes, but, um, and then whatever the map goes to, you will vote on that, correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you could, I, I think you could handle it a couple of different ways. It was originally proposed without that change and you all could make an amendment that included that change, if you will, or you can take this, what you have, as the, the final product and vote on it as such. Okay.
I agree. If you're uncomfortable, recuse yourself, yeah.
You have a quorum.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Um, and I just want to quickly mention, uh, I did receive another, uh, request from Mr. Gilling, who is at three thirty-six, um, G Street, uh, pretty much right across diagonal from Commissioner Bush. That request came in, uh, literally just before I was gonna be leaving town and we did not have time to make adjustments to the GIS map and to really take it into much consideration. Um, and so through some emails, uh, Mr. Gilling has agreed to come and speak to that here and we, we leave it in your court.
But three thirty-six is on the other side of the alley with all the other parcels, okay.
That is correct.
Okay.
Um, Matt, can you think of any other, um, items along the, in the zoning map that I might have missed that? Was on, like, earlier slide?
Very comprehensible, no.
Okay.
I think we can get into the specifics in a bit, I think if there's other questions, we.
I don't have any questions.
Why, why don't we go to public comment, I think Mr. Gilling's.
Mr. Gilling would like to speak.
Pretty patient about getting, getting heard.
Yep.
Uh, as it's been stated, Ben Gilling, Slida resident, uh, members of the planning commission staff, I want to thank you for your service to the community. Um, as everyone's familiar with, this process started back in twenty nineteen, uh, was paused because of COVID and then it really started to get traction in twenty twenty-three. Uh, that's when the future land use map, um, the flum, was addressed so that the land use code rewrite could have a foundational work from. Um, during twenty twenty-three, the city hosted numerous public meetings, surveys and other opportunities to receive input from the public and that feedback was incorporated into the land use document. The proposed land use map then came in front of council, came in front of a council meeting on, uh, August fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. As, uh, Director, uh, Omquist has stated, during this council meeting, as part of Resolution twenty-three dash three, um, which was stated in the minute, was to amend the city of Salida's comprehensive plan and future land use map. A public hearing followed by discussion were held and the resolution was commented on and amended multiple times. Each amendment was passed and the resolution was also passed as amended. This first step in the process, the codification of the land use map, allowed the rest of the rezoning process to proceed. So that brings us to today. Since the land use code map was codified in twenty twenty-three by a vote of the people's proxy, the city council, it has been established and should not be up for additional edits at this time since it is a foundational, foundational document that the rest of the rewrites work has been based on. City staff and the planning commission would like to revisit the land use code map. Um, it, excuse me, if the city staff and the planning commission would like to revisit the land use code map, they would need to start over again with numerous public meetings, surveys and other opportunities to receive input from the public. Proceeding without being revisited would be ignoring the people's voice. If staff and the commission choose to proceed with revisiting the land use map without reopening this process, they would be turning a deaf ear to the people's direction in twenty twenty-three. Um, and also based on some of the, uh, the, the Google map, um, you know, one of the issues that's not being addressed here is a lot of those properties that are in the commercial zone today are short-term rentals. So how is that gonna be handled if you're gonna change that into mixed-use neighborhood? We, there is no statement on that yet. Um, you know, in the residential zones, there's one per block, so you're, you're creating a lot of challenges there. And then a few little things that I wanted to point out, you know, density is how you get affordable housing and the densest places we have today is in C two. And by once again, downzoning these properties, you're taking away the opportunity to create affordable housing in our community. And then finally, commercial properties are needed to create businesses in this community. The only way we pay for things in this, this city is through sales tax and we do that through businesses. Also, the city is facing fiscal challenges right now, we need to grow our sales tax. So this downzoning is gonna really hit both of those areas hard, so. And yes, finally, I would like to ask that my property be, um, preserved as mixed-use downtown. Thank you.
May I ask a question of Mr. Gilling?
Yeah.
Ben, um, so you're, so you're saying that any change, if I heard you right, that your position is that any change in the original land use map should go back to public hearings and we shouldn't do that? And yet you're, you're asking us to change. and we shouldn't do that. And yet, you're, you're asking us to change your particular parcel. Is that correct?
Of course. I'm hedging my bet.
Okay. I just want to make sure I heard that right.
No, I, I'm trying to represent the rest of my neighbors with my first statement, okay? But I am surrounding by the, surrounded by the caring and sharing building on two sides of my property. So, I am, I am pretty much in a commercial zone.
Yeah.
My question is, okay, what other things, other than Ben's property, have been changed?
Only Dan's.
Is that correct?
Everything up to Fourth Street.
Oh, everything. Right, right, right.
Everything up to Fourth Street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that was originally from Third
Right.
to Fourth, it was all
Right.
M D.
Yep. Third to Fourth, from D to H.
Yes.
That is currently C2.
Right.
And it did show, I think it actually showed from E to H as M D. I'm pretty sure that M N has always been shown for the southern area between Third and Fourth off of E. But that, we could look and even pull up some older versions if we had to. But anyways, the point being, between E and H, that whole area between Third and Fourth did show as M D.
Right.
I mean, to me, if we're gonna change Ben's property, we should change them all.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too.
All of the, all of them?
Mm-hmm.
I, I like the transition.
You're not, you're not actually changing, you're just preserving what council
Preserving what's there.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, I, I like the idea of having a, a transition zone. I mean, aside from whether or not we think Ben's property should be changed, I do like the idea, especially on that Fourth Street block, of having a transition zone. Because, I mean, I think that was the issue. I'm not sure that when council voted for that, they really, I mean, we didn't really have all the information, maybe. But I like that transition, and that's how we sent it to council before.
That is how it went to council. That is correct.
And I think we had good reason for that. And, you know, I mean, I could, I could see making a case for Commissioner Bush's property, because it's like, right in the middle of that. And, you know, the uniqueness of where your property is. But I wouldn't want to go back to all of that being M D and just having it M D and then R2. I mean, that just, just seems like it needs a transition.
Affordable housing and sales tax revenues were
I disagree. I think, I mean, you see neighborhoods, like, are, you know, that, like, what's down there? Because it's really, it's R2, but it's actually, if you look at, you know, what's across from, you know, Hilton Lumber, and right in there, it's all very small lots and dense. And then, you know, you have commercial right there already. I, I would have no problem mixing that, changing that to M D there. I don't think I would either, but what's the primary difference between
Right.
No setbacks.
Point of order. My son owns one of those properties, so I guess I should recuse myself, too. Oh, boy. Dropping like flies.
We still have a quorum.
You still have a quorum? Yeah, you do.
Still have a quorum.
Yeah.
I mean, I can see, you know, that the lot, like, from G to H, where Ben's property is with caring and sharing, and then the new developments there, that is pretty much a commercial zone. I have no problem switching that back. But the rest of it, where it's, where it's really residential, I really like the idea of having it, having a, having, having that transition. That's just, again, I'm probably the only one, because I've been the only one to find on everything. That's okay.
Oh, my gosh. I wish I, this, I mean, I don't know. I feel like I'm coming in at the ninth hour, being asked to make a decision about this map that
Well, whatever
I mean, I think what he's asking is for it to be more consistent with the FLUM, which is what God vetted and approved.
Right. And, you know, and I'm okay with, with making the two changes, making the changes that are, that Commissioner Bush has asked for, and making the change that Mr. Gilling has asked for. But I, I'm not really in favor of changing the whole thing back. But if council wants to do that, that's their prerogative.
Well, I think if you went door to door in there, and you asked those people, they would, they'd say, yeah.
But Bill, what, why, why was the change made for the, can you speak to that? Because I think there was evidence that we, I mean, you didn't just pull that out of your hat.
No, no, there was, it was very much based off a specific feedback from, I believe it was three, it may have been four, different property owners on that stretch of Fourth Street.
Right, right.
Who
Who didn't want to have that change.
Didn't, they did not want it zoned M D. They wanted it to be
Right.
more akin to R2. They didn't, well, actually, I believe one of them did specifically use M N, request that.
Right.
But others said, this is more like R2, and should be R2 rather than M D.
Right.
So, I applied the M N.
And I think the compromise was M N. Right.
What's that?
And the, so the compromise was M N?
Yes, yeah.
Not going to R2?
Yeah, it's generally best to try to make those transitions at alley points, if you can.
Right.
So that your main thoroughfares have more or less the same thing on both sides of the street. But obviously, in this case, the alley only goes for one block. It doesn't go all the way through. So,
Right.
that made for the jagged edges.
Right.
Can I add one quick point? After the map was codified in 2023, I thought it was a done deal. And at that point, I stepped away from the process. Otherwise, I would have been voicing concerns here. So
I understand.
Yeah. Thank you.
So
Just to reiterate, the future land use map is not a zoning map. It's
Right.
It's a general policy document. And a lot of future land use maps don't even go down to the granularity that we did
Right.
as far as the types of uses. But it gives general use types throughout the city.
Right. Is there anyone else that wants to speak about this?
Is there anyone?
Anyone else?
Good point. Anyone else want to speak to this? We're talking about the whole land use map, not just this part, portion of the city.
Is there anybody besides Ben?
We do have one person online. If you would like to speak, could you raise your hand? There's a function at the bottom of your screen.
So, let's keep, let's keep moving. Doug?
Right.
Come on up.
Somebody online? Oh, there's another.
Okay. Keep him.
Okay.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. So
Hey, one, once again, I'm Doug Peltier. I live in the Riverside addition on West Sackett.
Mr. Peltier. So, we're, we're, this portion of the meeting is just about the land use map. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and let you speak, but we've already
We've already
we've already voted and passed the land use code on.
Yeah. I, okay, I, one new development was that they surveyed the illustrated property at 616 West Sackett to show where the floodplain is. And I wanted to point out that I have photos, the last four pictures in there are what the land looks like in the floodplain, or in another floodplain. It's dry, there's cactus growing there. But directly across the river in the rail yard, that is a riparian area over there. And so, not everything close to the river, you know, is riparian area. And my last statement was that, I think, being that there's so much variation in the R2 zoning, if you're on, if you're up on the river versus if you're anywhere else in town, about what you can use with your lot. And existing properties are non-conforming, most of them already. And so, I'd say it's virtually impossible to, you know, increase the dwelling size, or even a, you know, a secondary guest home, or, or bunkhouse, or anything like that, would all be, and, and the other thing was, I, I stated last time that that I said that on the second, on a buffer zone that you couldn't build in it. And that was because, because if you already had a lot of 2,000 square foot, then you would not be able to encroach. But if you don't have the 2,000 square foot, then you can encroach. That's the way I read that. And I ended up with the suggestion, as a P S, that maybe the simplest thing to do is just declare a 30-foot riverside back in the R2 zoning and forget it all. But, but I did take Mr. Kribble's suggesting that in redevelopment of an existing land, where you scrape it off and start over, that the, whatever you determine as setbacks or things like that, should apply with consideration of the neighboring properties, you know. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Peltier, since we had already recommended that land use code go to council, if you would like to speak at council on the land use code and not the map, that would be more appropriate.
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I'm gonna follow it to the end, so
Okay. Well, just be sure that you, you speak to them before they vote on the land use map.
It's, it's been a
Or the land
Time-consuming, confusing process for me.
Yeah.
For all of us.
But every day's a school day. Learning and breathing is supposed to stop at the same time. So, thank you very much.
Pete.
Pete?
Okay, Pete.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have someone online who wants to speak?
Yeah, somebody online?
No one online. Well, no one raising their hand.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, in order to move this thing along, I'd like to make a motion. We can discuss after I make the motion.
Okay.
I would, I would like to accept the change on 325 and 323, I guess it is, Commissioner Bush's property, based on the fact that it comes through the, the way the alley is. On 336, Mr. Gilling's property, I would suggest, because of the nature of that block, from G to H, from the alley to Fourth, that that entire block be put back to M D, and the rest of it be left alone. Does that make sense? Do you want me to point?
That makes sense.
Yeah, what do you mean by
Yeah.
One more time. Sure, yeah.
Grab the mic, yeah.
So, what I was suggesting was, leave this alone as proposed. I think that makes sense because of where the alley is. But I don't think spot zoning that property makes any sense, that one little thing. This whole block is pretty much commercial. You've got some residences there that have already been built, got Mo Burrito there, got caring and sharing. I would say that whole section from G to H, Fourth to the alley, could be moved back to M D, and the rest of it could be left alone. That's my motion.
Okay.
Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion and a second with the alteration of creating M D on, between the alley, Fourth Street, and
G and H.
G and H. And then, Lot 331 of the lot
No, 325 is Mr. Bush's property. And it's as it's shown on this map. We're not changing
Oh, it's 325?
Yeah, 325.
Oh, and that's as is?
Right.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought we were changing.
We would be accepting 325 and changing the block, the half-block.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second with that, with that alteration, and sending this land use map to council.
And I should have said in my motion, I move that we, we send to council those suggestions.
Okay. Is that clear in the motion up there? Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Tommy.
All right. Further discussion? Yes.
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 Okay. All righty.
Okay. Good work.
Wow. What do we do now?
I think you still need to approve the whole map as, as a repeal and replace the whole map.
Yeah, that, that is, that, that is true, because I was voting on the amendment.
That was, hold up, sorry. That was on the amendment.
Do you need to vote a full vote?
I thought it was, I thought that motion was, was with the, no, with the, so, we're just voting on that. So, yeah, so
To be safe, let's, let's
All right. So, I, I move to, I move to repeal and replace the future land use map, right?
The existing land.
The official zoning map of the city of
The official zoning map of the city of Sylida, as amended by our previous motion, and recommend that be sent to council.
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, let's vote.
Yes.
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 Great.
All right, your business.
No.
Don't have to ask
This is the business. I know, right?
This is the business.
We anticipate bringing this to city council for first reading on September 16th. In all likelihood, it will be on the consent agenda, but we will ask that it is moved from the consent agenda so that we have time to provide a presentation and solicit some feedback from council. So, that would allow us any changes that they really want to put in at that moment, for us to get that in front of them for the second reading and public hearing on October 7th. So, that's the anticipation at this point.
Okay.
For both the land use code and the comprehensive rezone of the zoning map.
Okay.
Other than that, just got back from a cast Colorado Association of Sketown conference at the end of last week. That was pretty informative in a lot of ways. And, you know, heard from a number of communities that are experiencing a lot of the same things that we are and some things that we are not. So, yeah, hope to take some of the lessons learned and bring that back to, to this group in one shape, one way, shape, or form, perhaps as a work session later on in the year, beginning of next year. We will be, at this point, and I know we did not cover it in the land use code, but we will be proposing, as it is written, with the 60-day effectiveness for the land use code upon approval. That 60 days would push us off into mid-December, approximately, after the recording of it, assuming a decision on October 7th. We may adjust that depending on whether or not the item gets continued. So
Did you decide whether you're gonna do a full stop or try to merge?
At this point, staff is not gonna be making any recommendations other than what's in the code. So, when you say a full stop, you mean
Well, you meant, yeah, we, we talked last time about, you know, not more, about moratorium, I mean, still allowing building permits, but having a moratorium on new development to give you, to give staff time for the paperwork and all the things that goes, has to go on?
The threshold for doing an emergency moratorium is quite high
Okay.
as far as the number of votes. Not entirely sure that, that the support would be there. And so, you know, in effect, the, the extended effectiveness date more or less gives us the same amount of time as a moratorium would to get everything ready. But in all reality, we're going to be reviewing some applications under the old code in 2026, as well as under the new code, perhaps at this very same meeting. Yeah, it's a little bit unavoidable.
Well, it's hard on staff. That's, that was our, that was our concern. It's hard on you guys to try to not only manage both codes, but all the paperwork and everything that has to be done for the new code. I don't know. Are you guys prepared to do that? I mean, that just seems like an enormous project put on for people. And all the time, still taking new development applications and new everything else. I mean, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking out for your mental and physical well-being.
Appreciate that. Yep. I mean, that's our intent.
Francy will bring fudge.
I might, I might. Yeah. Is it your birthday?
We'll let you know when it is.
Okay, please do. Yes.
Yeah. Anyways, so hopefully, we'll have a new land use code in effect by the end of the year.
That'd be amazing.
That'd be amazing.
That'd be great. We're all looking forward to that. So, when you bring, so I have two, I have two questions off the wall, nothing to do with codes or maps. But the, I see a lot of work being done on the old Great Wall. What is going on there? Do we know?
Look over here to staff to see what
There's a new
they've seen.
That's not it. That's
The old, old auto body shop, you mean, the historic site?
It was the, no. It was the, no, it's on G Street on the south side, almost to the corner, well, it's not on G Street, it's on Third Street, almost to G on the south side. And they're doing the whole facade is being redone. What is the Great Wall of China restaurant?
Yeah, that, it was actually an auto body shop way back in the day.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. That did go to HBC, and it, it went a while ago, and then he kind of held off, there was nothing happening. But it came back because he wanted to turn the upstairs into apartments, which doesn't have to be reviewed. But they, he talked more about the facade. And so he's renovating the facade to restore the original archway.
Love it, it's beautiful.
Of the opening and to restore the configuration of the building, of, rather, the windows on the facade as well. And then he got approval to do a painting treatment of the masonry with specific, you know.
So do we know what he's planning to have on that first floor? Is it going to be a business?
No, he hasn't specified any uses anyway in that, in that discussion, but.
Boy, I'd sure like to know.
Yeah, maybe another Chinese restaurant, who knows?
Yeah. I would like to know also if anybody knows what's happening in the old original Sweeties building that was the art collective and now it's, I've heard somebody say it's a restaurant, but we don't know.
Have not heard. That's one of the downsides of us not having business licenses, so when these changes happen, nobody at the city knows sometimes, we're the last ones to know.
Right.
We are talking about, though, instituting business licenses citywide, so that if you are gonna be changing your use or changing the business, that we actually know.
Right.
And it'll allow for us to help collect better data.
Right, and I'm also concerned about that old Bluebird Day building that I've talked to you about that's still papered up. And I don't, I mean, I feel, I feel like something ought to, I mean, that building had an, had an ADU on the top, short-term rental in the back on the top of it. So if people, I don't know if they are, but if people are living there, they're living in the building behind it, and don't we have, don't we have a requirement to have something in the front 50% to have some sales tax collection in that area?
In the front 50% of the unit itself, so even if it's a commercial unit separate from the STR unit.
Right.
Yeah, but if it's, if it's unoccupied.
Been papered up like that for a long, well, we don't know that. We don't know that it's unoccupied.
The building official has done an inspection and didn't find anybody, any evidence of anybody living in there.
Evidence of anyone living there, okay, well, that's that. No, I'm talking about the built, I'm talking about the building behind. If you want to come back up and talk into the microphone. The bill, the, they may be, if anyone is living there, it would not be in the front part of the unit, it would be in the apartment that's beyond, behind it and above it. And if that's the case, then don't we have a requirement that some kind of, uh, uh, sales taxable, some kind of business needs to be in the front of the building?
We, we don't. It's, we really don't have a requirement, and I guess that would be, that would apply to all the rest of the vacant buildings along F Street and other places right now, too.
Right.
That, you know, we can't force somebody to have a business inside it.
I was curious, because it's, seems like it's such a beautiful building, and I hate to see it sitting there boarded up or papered up with stuff stored in it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Are we gonna have meetings in September? Are you gonna be all busy at council?
Yes, we are currently planning two meetings, one on September 9th and the other at September 25th.
Okay.
We got a couple things coming your way.
Okay.
So please put those dates aside.
We will do it.
Yeah. Two Mondays, well, yeah, two Mondays from now. Or two Tuesdays from now, and then.
And then a Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Tuesday and a Monday.
Yep.
And will, the Tuesday will be a work session or a regular?
No, it will be a regular, regular meeting.
I saw the cancellation for the work session today.
Yeah, yeah, but we'll have a regular meeting.
All right. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn? Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, come on, here.
Those in favor? All right.
All right, let's go.
All right.